Okay.
It's gonna be live now, guys. There it is, online until Vicki decides to take it down.
Alright.
Yeah.
We have the agenda, are there any revisions? Otherwise, a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah.
Our motion is second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we have the minutes from the March twenty-third meeting. For a motion to approve the minutes. We have a motion, we have a second?
No.
We have a motion, a second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. Plants and Meadows, personal care home, Milford Road, land development plan. Are you presenting?
Yes.
Would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Chris Rice, I'm with Buffalo Engineering Group. We're the engineers and script engineers for this site. I'm gonna introduce a little bit and, you know, I have big questions. And again. So we went through the conditional use last fall. If I said that, if any of you, you know, maybe a little bit more familiar with the project, you're not, this is the first time you guys have seen it. It's located, you're on Route two oh nine, between Muller's Diner and the one gas station. It'll car wash in the back, so when there's a driveway, they put me back. All the way back, and the ones around it, there's an existing single fifty inch house, right, several hundred feet back from the roof. So it's an existing house, this little driveway, and it's been used as a residential. So the client bought this, the applicant bought this, to use as a personal care facility, so almost like a small, versatile type facility for for elderly and, and it has, gonna have eight beds in the facility, so, so the property is supposed to four acres. It has an easement out to Route two oh nine, and I can, I'll get into some more of the details on this in a little bit. So we had to see one commercial zoning district, so it was a conditional use. And then last year, it did go through the conditional use process with the township, and then received conditional use approval with the, with the number of conditions. So since then, we've been getting land development plans, since they are converting it from residential to a commercial use, and are now just, just starting that process off. So just a few things about the site, as I mentioned, it's a long ride, but it goes back. They have an easement that goes out to Route two oh nine and through the existing park lot over down here. And it took us, you know, we reviewed a lot of information here, we did get a little messy with these easements, go way back. So they have an easement, and they're heated from out in Route two oh nine, there's also a private access street that comes through to serve these lots too. So at one point, they created a private access street that is, I think it's fifty feet wide. Yeah, that comes right through. And, and then there's also the easement that they have, so we are contacted PNDI, PNDI, which is for the nature of the area. Contacted them last fall too. We have. I say. And we're still working things out with PNDI, because PNDI's initial response was, we have to improve the whole diner properly. To meet PNDI standards, curb, possible turning lanes, so, driven, their attorney is reaching out to PNDI's attorney, we're trying to get that sorted out, because we don't have the rights to do what PNDI has, and we need to respond. And we did reach out to them last fall, initially, their response was, yeah, shouldn't be a problem, you have an easement there. When we submit the scoping application officially, then they have a different response. As far as traffic goes, it would be minimal, like I mentioned, eight beds, they then had two full-time employees there at a time. So the traffic we were anticipating was about twenty-four trip ends between the workers coming in and any deliveries and things of that nature. We did look at, part of the condition, some things were, you know, making sure we get emergency vehicles back there, and we did run a fire truck through, and there are portions, an existing stone driveway that runs through, and there are portions that are, uh, right now, you know, fifteen, it, it varies a little bit, but it's generally about fifteen to twenty feet wide, some areas that are a little narrow, we're, we're gonna propose at least provide a twelve foot wide drive. And have turning areas that are gonna be twenty feet wide, stationed where we have additional width, because as it's coming through, we do have wetland areas, so we have had a wetland delineation, so as part of this driveway too, right here, there is a driveway culvert connecting the wetlands on the eastern side, and there's a stream that comes through, and there's wetlands on the western side too, and the stream continues down. So there is a stream crossing right here. But I'll just, on the driveway, real quick, proposing widening it in areas where we have additional area where you can have two vehicles pass each other, and because, you know, the traffic is minimal, we think that should be adequate, especially if we're putting these spots in areas where there's visibility, so you can see if no cars are coming, I think, but then, and that. So as far as the stream crossing goes too, we did reach out to, we'll need a, a permit for the stream crossing, because we would have to improve that. It does pass, you know, a number of storms, it does, the wetland area also functions as a big base, big pond. But we are proposing to make some improvements there, so the capacity of that culvert will be increased, so we can at least, through the hundred-year storm, not have any overtopping, just to be safe. So we don't want, this is the sole access in and out of that site. So, so we are working on that, what is, what we ran PNDI, for nature species, potential for bog turtle came up, so we had to do a phase one bog turtle survey. So we have a, um, spawner wetlands, the initial wetland delineation, so they are now gonna do a, a bog turtle survey too, so we seem to be, you know, hitting snacks, and some of these outside agents. Um, as far as the well, I have an offset well, we did provide some testing information, they had completed, and also a new set system that's proposed for the, for the site, that has been designed. Um, so other than that, we're using an existing stone area for the parking. Like I mentioned with the, there's not really too much parking, parking, I think four spaces always require, we have more than that here, adding an ADA space, where you have, you know, reading, there's slow requirements too. Um, and then as far as the building goes, it's gonna be revisions made to the building itself, we're not proposing any additions to it, but they are, you know, refurbishing the entire building itself for this specific use and going through the permits they need for that. So that's a quick summary of the, of the project that we're, we have here, and now we can answer any questions, or go into more details or anything that you'd like. Like, as you know, this is the first time we're here, I do look back to reviews from the staff, and, you know, the vet, and then continue working with the DEP and PNDI, trying to get those items resolved to.
Right, correct. So it's all you submitted for, for this.
So at no time will we know any eight patients, always eight with the working staff, it's that six patients.
We must eight patients, and then the staff.
Two staff.
Yeah, and if I have anything. Did they expand anything? Or have anything, yeah, or feel free to.
And the bathroom facilities, we have two, if I understand, there's gonna be two bathrooms in there?
Um, that's in the number one. Some of the rooms have their own bathroom, right? Some of the rooms have their own bathroom, correct?
No, well, one, one of the bedrooms was one share bathroom, if you remember the first time, yeah, and then one for regular bathroom. On the other side, it's supposed to be a kitchen area, but there was one on the, on the outside of the plan, that was one to share a bathroom.
This is really land development, okay, and not inside the building, this one, you know, so. Uh, the twenty-foot right away, so the travelway varies though, twelve feet, ten feet, depending.
Right, and you're going through that twenty-foot right, twenty-foot right away is written in the deed, and the right, and the, the driveway varies, and also in certain areas goes outside that right away. And we did identify a lot of those areas, and we're working, we're gonna be working on getting additional easement of those areas where they're leaving the outside.
So.
Rather, rather we change the driver, keep the driver where it's at, it does seem to, seem to work.
We don't have that, I pay the money. You have to go to Route two oh nine, we just have the, you know, part of the house.
You should have.
We're a displan right here.
Oh, okay.
And then pull it all the way back, we have our site, you know.
Pull it all the way back, yeah. So I was ready for that.
We have how many areas where you can make a U-turn? Two cars could make.
There's several areas where they can, where you can pass, now, like, when you're, when you're pulling in here, you have some width, and then the trick, the, the main area right here where that culvert is, right now, it's only wide enough for one car. So there is an area where you can have, you know, a car comes up here, there's areas on both sides, if one is right here, and right here where it ties into the, right here where the gas station is, you've got two cars that are passed, so they'd be able to see each other. If the, you know, if one car's coming across where that culvert is, I mean, you're, you're maybe a hundred feet away or so, so you'd be able to, to see each other. And then once you're through there, there's another one right here, right where this bend is, and then as you go around the bend, there's an area where, you know, the stone pullout right here, at this bend, right here, we added one too, and then up here is the, the site itself, so in the site itself, you can, you have access to turn around and that. So a lot of the, we added a lot of these, because we have wetlands on one side, and we don't wanna go any closer to that, and on this other side, you have some steep slopes and some of these portions right here, there's some steep slopes. The plan here. So it does get, you know, tight in some places, and I don't know what to have. So the, the dark right here, that's where you get some steep slopes right next to the driveway, so rather than.
We took some time.
You know, where our driveway is. That does seem great.
Okay.
But will the driveway be paved?
They, they would like.
I didn't see it go in here.
Right now, and then when they have enough money, they would like. So ideally, they would, they could just have it approved as stone for the time being, and then, you know, someday come back and pave it.
Oh, is there any?
Therapy and order for some issue then?
Is there any record of flooding back there?
I'm sorry.
Is there any record on flooding back there with the wetlands?
It's like, Karen's asking about, is there any history of flooding back there? That's.
Yeah.
With that amount of wetlands that's back there?
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't have any real way of.
No.
Really knowing, yeah, I mean. Um. Like, say, there, there's like a photo profile, we provide there, you can kind of see generally how the topography is, and there's like a little lip there, I had to look out a bit closer, but, uh, yeah, he's evaluating the culverts, you know, make sure a hundred-year passes, which I think is good. You know, we'll, we'll look, and, and the wetlands don't, really, the birth on the property itself, which I didn't look at the grades, but help it, it's elevated as compared to surrounding wetlands, I mean. Yeah, it's not like there's a one-handed floodway or floodplain in the area either, so. Significant risks, I think they're taking care of the, the main one, which is the crossing, which is the low point, so.
We, we had a study on that.
Yeah, property itself, and they're really, there's multiple spots for the wetlands, I think right here, like, just, just the air, over here, it gets pretty close. But the property itself is, is upland except for that small area right here. But the driveway does, you know, there's wetlands on the side, yeah.
Mark, Mark was asking about, just, is the application fine? It's a pretty thorough submission on their part, and as he said, I, you know, he kept me in the loop on the scoping application, where I was able to PNDI at least, and have a sense of where that was going, and it sounds like they talked to DEP, so there's, seems like a lot of things moving here, and it's, it, it's a complete package.
Okay.
Okay, for a review, so.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with DEP, we can use a general permit seven, just for a minor road crossing, give a buck for the clearance, so.
That's, okay.
And I think I know B, but.
PNDI could be a challenge, yeah.
It's everybody's challenge, you're not alone. You're not alone.
It's not the first, uh, I've had the headaches with PNDI, that's for sure.
Okay, well, this is just the middle, and Ben says it's complete, so look for a, a motion to accept this. We have a motion, we have a second, second, we have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, see you next month, or whenever, in the near future. Yep. Thank you. One step forward. A lot of steps. A lot of steps.
I appreciate our feedback.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't have to do anything, but there's, there is made, and why? The deeds plan. What can we do to help? John F. Kennedy, according to his campaign, a little, uh, and they invited systems, say, ask what you can do for America, and not what America can do for you. And that nice, that spirit resonates in my wife and I. Back home, to do everything we can to impact our person in the comment, this is my story. You can testify, we go over all the time, and once we're paid to recommend, to revise, they won't shut us in, because they have seen that we have had our giving. You know, this is a medical vision, we all went to medical vision, out of my bigger retirement, I mean, 401K. I could be writing on him and complaining, I'm gonna do, do sit down, and I want, but that's not my call, my call is.
I'm thirty-three years old, and he's he was just my parents my whole life, I forgot a lot of kids, but I'm not theirs, so I'm older than he. I'm destined to test, but, but, but tomorrow, I don't know, he is speaking.
We love our enemy, but let's not set our foot on, I can't stand that, according to what God told us, step on it and span, fair. And, you know, okay, man. Occupant is not to show off your degrees or your car, occupied is, huh? And you're said to be coming, so that they know that you, uh, with God. The passion. I don't have my door, I don't have my door, I don't have my mind, that will not happen. But what I'm saying, is my community is suffering from the sadnesses that have brought me to be present all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate you, man. Thank you all, I've sat everywhere for this delivery, now I have something my own, thank you all.
Thank you.
Your loss.
The next item on the agenda is the Broadhead Water Association letter, and, and thanks for coming, I mean, it's, I, I, I read this letter, and I, I was actually offended, I mean, it's, it's threatening, you know, that's, you know, legal action, delay, you know, it, it just, uh, so. Ben, why don't we talk about what exactly this, what is going on, what is driving this, and where the, where the township, what, how proactive township has been already?
Okay, sure, uh, so, take a step back, so this is related to Act sixty-seven, alright, and basically each county is responsible for adopting Act sixty-seven plans, which basically, uh, they're responsible for looking at their major watersheds in the county, and developing plans at a watershed, uh, level, basically, like the, kind of thousand, or ten thousand foot altitude view, um, a kind of holistic approach to each individual watershed, uh, which comes down to recommendations for stormwater management, kind of how quickly you can release stormwater off the site, so that you don't see, uh, debilitating effects occur for the watershed. Um, and a lot of these plans were passed in kind of the mid-two thousands, and almost all of them statewide have, at this point, expired, they had, had five-year windows initially. Um, almost the entire state, if you look at a map of which ones were current, it was really just like one county or uh, one watershed, like the, uh, the southeast region, and then kind of a pocket around Pittsburgh. They're like the only spots in the state that had current Act sixty-seven plans. Um, my understanding is that DEP is now at the point where they are pushing for a lot of these counties to revisit their Act sixty-seven plans, um, bring them up to speed with a lot of the changes that have occurred, have occurred in stormwater management requirements, um, as far as DEP and state standards go, over the past fifteen, twenty years, since a lot of these were adopted. So that's, that's kind of the, the backdrop for this model ordinance that was effectively adopted, I believe it was December, really December of this patch year. Uh, and so they, they basically put out a model ordinance that they're recommending for adoption by all of the municipalities that fall within that watershed, this is for the, you know, the Broadhead. And, uh, and, uh, yeah, I'm trying to think here, so, the, the model ordinance, they basically gave us at that time, a six-month period. Uh, they wanted the adoption to occur by, like, June first or June second is the deadline for it. And the, the main, uh, they opened it up for its public comment, and there was a lot of comments from, uh, people when the model ordinance came out regarding uh, their buffer requirements, essentially, they were saying that you need to provide a hundred fifty-foot buffer around all streams, lakes, ponds, and wetlands. Uh, our stormwater management ordinance currently, and has, for as long as I know, for a while now, had basically a fifty-foot buffer requirement. Uh, there are some things that are permitted, it's a very small list of permitted activities that can fall within that fifty-foot buffer, uh, but generally speaking, it's, it's intended to prevent, uh, development from approaching within that distance, so, those features. The, the sticking point with this model ordinance coming out was, uh, it, I think it was like highlighted, all, it was like underlined, bold, red, the one fifty. Uh, initially, they said that it was, any relief from that requirement was to be given by the zoning hearing board, or it was basically, I think it was a misquote on their part, but they basically said by variance, which kind of insinuated zoning hearing board was supposed to be in granting that, uh, and then they, had kind of held up a stick of, you know, basically if, uh, you're not basically consistent with the model ordinance, there could be penalties associated with it. Um, there's been a lot of conversations back and forth between a variety of municipalities in the, the county and the County Conservation District about these requirements specifically, uh, I think that the County Conservation District is basically, to this point, kind of stood, kind of basically said, you either need to provide the one fifty, or you need to um, have some sort of scientific justification for providing, or requesting a lesser buffer than the one that we are specifying, which I, I've asked around, it's, there's not really, there's not really an abundance of, uh, scientific research out there with which you can kind of hang out on, it's kind of a piece that's in that way, so. Um, you know, we've had a lot of conversations about it, uh, you know, the board, I think that bear concern, Mark, obviously, you can feel free to chime in with your thoughts here, but you know, you consider two oh nine, and, you know, there's, um, and there's watercourses and wetlands that are, yeah, spots only a few hundred feet off of, you know, I mean, Marshall corridor, and obviously, you could grant relief in each and every case, to some degree, if you were to put this one hundred fifty foot buffer in place, but i- if you were to follow the letter of the law, it would make a lot of these properties unbuildable, right, which I think is kind of, you know, obviously, on some restrictions in place, you don't want them building right up to an adjacent to a stream or a wetland, but uh, I think the feeling was that one fifty is too restrictive. Maybe real quick, the one fifty, where, and this kind of comes up in this letter, the one fifty generally comes from, uh, chapter one or two requirements from the state, which is kind of the basis for NPS permit applications. Whenever you're doing, uh, like, uh, commercial or residential development that's over an acre to serve, which you have to get, like, it's NPS permits uh, for construction, and if you're working in an area that has a high-quality or an exceptional value stream, this one hundred and fifty-foot repairing buffer requirement comes into play. Now, chapter one oh two currently, it only deals with streams, they don't have this buffer, and it would only apply to wetlands if they were like right in the, uh, like, the floodplain essentially of that stream, they would apply that buffer too, but you don't get it, you don't see it applied as broadly as their model ordinance is requesting it to be, it's like an isolated wetland, they don't protect that via chapter one oh two, the same way that they're requesting it to be protected here, you could, you could basically disturb right up next to that wetland, with, you know, some necessary, like, silt vents or compost filter stuff protecting it. But, uh, so that, that's where I think the one fifty comes from, is that they're trying to get municipalities to be generally consistent with that one fifty from chapter one oh two, that they've been, you know, regulating in that area for a while. It's just that, even in chapter one oh two, you can, you can still impact the hour fifty feet, they allow you to do that, you just have to do some additional water quality benefits, whereas here, it's pretty prohibitive, the one fifty.
So. Ben, ju- just let me interrupt, just for a second, so basically, if, if anything over an acre, acre is a hundred, hundred fifty by three hundred, approximately, you know, one, like a one-acre lot, so, anything larger than that, you have to get a national stormwater discharge permit, you know, which takes a year or so to get, and, you know, you have to do all the engineering for it, so we're not talking about, you know, potentially small areas that you still have to file for a national stormwater discharge, it's not like you're, we're only doing a hundred acres. It's anything over an acre, you know, a hundred fifty by three. And, so, so Ben, what you're saying is that, r- right now, you know, with all the high-quality streams, which is the entire county.
Pretty much, yeah.
Is, is protected, it's already protected by that. But now.
It's really just, it would really, the main, um, types of development that would come in to be most impacted by this would be those that would be under an acre, so the ones that are proposing five thousand plus additional square feet of area, consider like the, um, the Otter, Otter Lake, um, storage building, when they came in, I mean, I think they were just under five thousand, but say they did six thousand. Right, that's where this would come into play, um, another one that would be impacted would be uh, Mount Nebo Harvest, that proposed building they were looking at, because they have a wetland feature on the site, there's no real stream in that area, but then they were proposed to be at least fifty feet away with their schedule layout. If they were to go to a hundred fifty, and again, they were gonna have to do an NPS permit, what they're doing, so they would have to comply with all those requirements. If we were to adopt this model ordinance, verbatim, the way they have it there, they would not be in compliance from a wetland buffer standpoint, it would need to secretly in order to make that project viable, and same would have gone for Dollar General, um, not as familiar with the Tractor Supply Plan as far as, you know, wetlands, the vicinity of that one, but you know, a lot of these ones we've had recently have had NPS permits, so it's not like. You know, a lot of these ones we've had recently have had N P S permits, so it's not like. You know, there's currently this this whole regulation where massive development is going in adjacent to these.
Would that, um, cut down on some of the, uh, warehouses that are oversized and. Placed in many areas, I know there's a lot of complaints about them, like down thirty three, they're everywhere.
Um. Down that direction, possibly, because you're you're getting into an area of the state with less high quality and exceptional value. Streams where, um, N P S would not be regulating. That, like, they wouldn't have that hundred fifty foot buffer requirement already in place, and so. If you're not by a high quality and exceptional value stream, you're able to encroach closer. Um, to streams and develop closer without, you know, uh, running into any issues. If if a similar, you know, uh, ordinance requirement to this would go in place. Possible, um, hard hard to know without knowing the exact site location, you know, how much it would encroach.
So, basically, if you have a little ten foot. Uh, spring, you know, that's flagged as a wetland. It's a, you know, a little. A, uh. Seasonal spring, it's a wetland, say it's ten feet wide, you would have to go a hundred and fifty feet. In every direction around that wetland. Um, to comply with this ordinance, is what they're saying.
If development is more than how much? The five thousand, you know, it's in there.
Yes, yeah, there, yeah, I think it's, I think it's five thousand square feet. Where it's.
If it's what?
When, when the drainage plan requirements kick in, they're, I think it's five thousand square feet of additional impervious area, is, so if you're under five thousand square feet, then you're not. Behold, it's a stormwater management requirements.
Right, right, but but in other, on a, on a project.
Right.
You know, on a, on a larger project, you're losing, I mean, a hundred fifty feet is half of a football field. And when you start thinking of it like that, half on each side is is a full football field, but, you know, plus. You know, it it just, uh, it it, the impact is, how many lots won't be available? Uh, you know, in the future, it it's, uh, it's staggering when you think of it, because we, we have steep slopes, we have wetlands, and and we do work around them. It just, it's, it's discouraging to see something like this. You know, wh- where they're, you know, saying it, let's, let's cover everything, and don't get me wrong, I mean, we have to protect the wetlands, I mean, there is, you know, that's, that's important, but. But, uh, you know, this, to me, this is really excessive, you know, and and threatening.
Well, and the the, just so it's clear, that the the buffer numbers are not coming from V W A. They came from, it's not even a conservation district, because the conservation district out there would be like. Uh, upset about it, it was.
Yeah, nobody wants to take credit.
It's a group. Which the conservation district put together, I forget what they call themselves, but, um, it allegedly had representation from municipalities and other folks on it that put together the new plan. The last plan came out in two thousand and seven?
That's my right.
Thereabouts, this is right when I came back to the area, so two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And most municipalities around here have not adopted, or the the county has not updated its plan, and it's supposed to be updated like every five years, like Ben said, so.
Like a lot of these, five thirty seven is the same way.
Yeah.
And then it goes fifteen, twenty.
Yeah, it's been twenty years, and so, um, I mean, there are kind of, they, there's been a lot of pushback, there was a big meeting at the control center. Um, with represent, with engineers and municipal representatives and the conservation district, and there was someone there with the D E P. Um, they tried to somewhat explain their position on the hundred and fifty foot buffer, um. That, and it's not, there is, there's, you could possibly put in someone to meet equivalencies, which I'm not, I don't understand that, but.
Yeah.
Basically protected the theme as you would with a buffer.
Yeah, they, they mentioned here, the the problem, the problem with that recommendation is that they're actively changing their. Stormwater menu, like the statewide stormwater menu that uses, uses the basis for. Cals for F D S permit, so, like, what they're recommending in here.
Could change.
It 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 is to some degree what's currently used, um, but they are, have already put out a draft ordinance for comment. That's going to essentially completely change the way that these calculations are done, and so. You adopt this, one, if you really cover something, I think to write it into an ordinance, uh, this methodology, but then two. Uh, it, there's a good chance that it's outdated within a year or two.
Hmm, and so some of the pushback was that the, was from the county itself, because the county planned. But the proposed ordinance was a vivid to the plan. And like Ben said, there was a lot of the language that was in red, which made it appear as though that was, um, within the municipality's discretion. And so one of the things that appeared in red was the hundred and fifty, which now they're going back and saying that's not really within your discretion.
They're holding to the hundred fifty.
Yeah, and and basically, and basically saying, if you don't do it, then. If someone wants, like, V W A for a project, and it doesn't have a hundred and fifty, then they could possibly come in and sue you that you're not properly protecting. You're not complying with the Act one sixty seven plan or protecting the watersheds.
Even if it's not adopted.
That's the problem, and to any green group out there.
Right.
That comes and wants to contest what you're doing, could tie something up in court, or. Right.
Yeah, and it becomes an issue for municipalities like this, without an issue, I mean, I also represent the Borough of Delaware. There's, there's not, there's not parcels of land that are big enough to. Develop in Delaware, I mean, so you don't have the same sort of issues as municipalities where there are. And they openly admit the municipalities, like each of the boroughs, each jobs, but they're never going, they couldn't develop anything in the hundred, like, everything is impervious in the borough.
Right, right.
Um, but, and the waiver, the variance issue was also an issue on a legal standpoint, because zoning hearing board doesn't have jurisdiction to hear. Stormwater.
I think that, I think the explanation that I heard is that they miss, they misuse the term, that basically they were pending a waiver or.
Who's writing a, who's writing, uh, an ordinance that doesn't know the legal definition of something?
That, that's what I heard.
That's written by itself.
I mean, you know, what, what, where I live isn't even in the Broadhead water.
Hmm.
Uh, watershed.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, we're in Bushkin.
We're in Bushkin.
Yeah, and and a lot of township is, and, you know, you know, they're dictating. You know, uh, rules that don't even, aren't even in their watershed, you know, that's, it's it's frustrating, you know, to, to see this. Um. I I don't know, I don't know how the supervisors feel about this, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Now, it's a discussion we had before, is there a one sixty seven for Bushkin?
I have to look at that, they they have it, uh, online, which I can see, status on that one.
You know, well, I think we talked about that.
And there's, there's, you know, no exception even for.
Come down.
If, if the wetland. That hundred fifty foot, if there's a ridge, and then the grade goes the other way, you know, this side of the ridge, it's, you're still protecting that.
Yeah, that's, that's what we ran into on a project where the the township was required, I think they had like a hundred foot requirement, but the way that the pography was, it was only. Totally pitched towards the, it was like such a small streams, the other seventy B. You know, was basically going opposite direction to the streamless, and yet they were still interpreting that you needed to reinforce the other seventy.
That much was asked out there, I was like, because basically, like, you're, you're dictating a hundred and fifty regardless of where it is in relation, so if my development is up. Like elevation wise or down, whatever, so that my runoff isn't going to be going towards the stream, you're still making go a hundred feet from all angles, and. They had some bit wrong answer about all the other things you're protecting, and not just, you know, those things, I mean, there was a lot, there was a lot.
Uh, we had prepared a draft, uh, revision of the stormwater ordinance that I I sent over to the supervisors, um. I'm talking about it tonight some more. Uh, the way, the way we had it currently written, which came out just, I sent it over to everybody prior to this letter, kind of getting circulated. Um. Well, the only thing I think that this changes is that it shows that somebody's environmental efforts are kind of, this is a hot button issue that they seem to be following. Pretty intensely, uh. But our, kind of our recommendation was. Uh, providing a couple options, so one, still keeping the fifty foot requirement, uh, but then, uh, basically having. Two, two options on top of that, one being if you have the one hundred and fifty foot and you provide it, then you're good, the second being. Uh, the provision of two, what are called V M Ps, or basic stormwater management. Facilities in sequence prior to discharging to one of these features, so, and that's a pretty common place thing you'll see. Um, say you had a former gas station site, uh, they've gasoline has kind of seeped into the soil and the groundwater in the area, so. On a site like that, you don't want to have an infiltration facility, you don't want to promote it, water to pass through. Kind of pushes the contaminants down to the surrounding, correct, the, a little groundwater, so you'll be permitted to do like a aligned detention facility, so you're not infiltrating at all, you're just going to kind of hold back. Slow down water and then release it at a slower rate, they'll typically just want to see like, okay, you put like, um. You know, some type of water quality thing inside the inlets that's going to keep any oils, debris from passing down. As you release it, and then there might be a second one, like some type of veggie heated feature, so. It it basically gives them the option of, you don't want to unnecessarily. Harm the properties where, oh yeah, a hundred fifty foot, not a problem at all, we could provide that, but then giving. Pointing to, okay, well, now we're asking for additional water quality, you know, features to be put in. In lieu of the extra hundred feet in buffer width, so. It's kind, it was kind of a recommendation, see, we can talk about it tonight, what they want to do, uh. Certainly open to any opinions for anyone here on the planning commission as well.
Yeah, I, you know, I think, I think it's excessive, and it, because it doesn't take into account the size of the wetland. You know, the the the, uh, the impact it has, it's, it's, it becomes everywhere, it's everything, it's not, you know. You know, protecting the exceptional quality streams is important.
So it's, it's just not going to allow any exceptions in.
You'll, you'll end up closing everything down, you know, it it just, if you ride around and you look at the development out the one eye. Um, and then you look what's behind it, you know, there, there are wetlands, and you have to protect them, but if it's a hundred fifty feet, half a football field. If, you know, you're going to close everything down, you know, that's a taking, you know, it's it's a taking of land. Anyway, that's my opinion, so, and I think it's upsetting.
Due to existing. Properties, like exists, existing establishments that are already there, is, do they, do they actually have any legal way to. Get in later on and try to say, well, you have to now meet these specifications, even though you were there for a long time?
Not unless you go and change.
Not unless.
Like you're not going to freak it out of it.
Yeah.